Call and meet in order, we'll start with the Bloods and Leagues.
Bloods and Leagues. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You got it?
Here.
Rosak?
Here.
Crowe? Scarborough?
Here.
Merrill Landsford?
Here.
Are there any changes to the agenda?
Mayor, there are no changes to the agenda, but I want to remind you that there was a replacement agenda issued on Monday that had an additional item, had a consent agenda. But as amended, there are no changes to the agenda.
Then we'll move to public comment. Anyone who would like to address the council, please step to the podium and state your name. My first name is Steve Lassens-Warble. I serve in the area of Streeter and Nea Grove. Thank you, Dave. Yes, sir.
It's my understanding that the council is going to have some inspections on some rentals in Streeter. And I'd like some consideration there on the paperwork here in front of me. Either you have a legal opinion, and if you do, what are you going to do about that? Secondly, it's my understanding that as a tenant, I have a right to refuse the people coming into the house according to litigation that's already been done. So how we work that out? And the other thing I would suggest is if you want to go into these homes with these tenants or whatever, it would probably be better to do it when they move out of the house, do it then, or leave the house, do it then, rather than invading the rights and privacy of a citizen's.
Okay? Anyone else? You with a paper? If not, then we'll move to the agenda, item one.
Actually, Mayor, we have two presentations.
Oh, I'm sorry. We'll get two presentations.
I'd like to lead off, if it's okay. As you know, a couple of years ago, the city discontinued its own 911, and we joined a new joint authority created, and it was called, is called, Vermillion Valley Emergency Communications Authority. And I serve on the board of the Vermillion Valley Joint Authority, as does Bob Turner. There are nine members of the board that represent the five governing bodies that participate together and have created the joint authority. It's chaired by Jim Wolfert, who is the chief of police in Pontiac, and he's here today. And the executive director, who manages the day-to-day affairs and is accountable to the board, is Randy Wittenberg, who is also here. And because of some changes there, and because of how that operation is run, and because we feel a need to report back to the governing bodies, because that's who we're accountable to, are the governing bodies in these five jurisdictions, one county and four cities, we're making these presentations to all of those, starting with the city of Streeter. So I'm sure Jim or Randy will make the presentation.
Mayor, council, thank you for having us over today. We appreciate it. We started this venture on February 1st of 2017, so we're almost two years into it. We currently have 12 full-time dispatchers and five part-time dispatchers. We currently have four dispatchers that are citizens of the city of Streeter. So we are employing four people who live here in the city of Streeter. But a couple of financial highlights I just want to go over real quick. I don't want to take up all of your time, and I will answer any questions you might have. The fees for the government agencies, which would be what we call the big five, which is Streeter, Livingston County, Dwight, Fairbury, and Pontiac, the total for that revenue is $673,000. That represents a 2% increase in next year's budget. By statute, or by agreement, we could take as much as 5%, but we looked at the CPI, and the CPI was 2.2, so we settled in at 2%, and we felt like that was sufficient for our needs. If you see fees for fire and EMS, they're $75,000. We do receive $868,000 in telco receipts. Those are the receipts we receive based on the cell phone bills and the phone bills that come there. There's a dollar and 50 cents that's charged on each bill. So we receive that. We get that from the state of Illinois. It's pass-through money. It's not tax money, per se. The 911 budget, we have three budgets. So the 911 budget is $276,230. That's made up of our telephone lines, our infrastructure internally, and our 911 coordinator salary. The dispatch budget is a little over 1.2 million. That's made up of our employees. It's also made up of our radio network and those things, other contracts that we may have. We've started this year. We've gone to a capital reserve budget. And the reason we've done that is because we do have needs, ongoing needs. So for example, the capital reserve budget this year is a little over $50,000. We have a five-year equipment plan in place. And this year, we'll be replacing all the dispatch furniture, which is the original furniture that was in the dispatch center, it's been over 13 years. So it started to break down, so we're going to replace that this year. We'll be putting $50,000 a year in restricted reserve. That fund is solely to be used in the case of emergency. What we don't want to do is have to come back to you if we had some type of a physical disaster, had a tower go down, something of that nature, and have to come back to the five entities and ask them for additional money. So we feel like it's put on our part to make sure that we put some money in reserve to make sure that we can take care of our own needs. In 2018, just as I, you know, Streeter contributed a little over $170,000 to the dispatch center. In 2019, they'll contribute $174,000, a little over. AMT, I just put, I thought you might be interested, AMT, the ambulance service here out of Streeter contributes almost $14,000. We'll contribute a little over $14,000 next year. Couple of 2019 projects that we've got going on. The new dispatch furniture that I talked to about. We're going to, working on an EMS project with Chief Bird and OSF to do a better job of dispatching ambulances to your citizens and making sure that we're not dispatching an ambulance that doesn't need to be dispatched. Nixle, and I would encourage all of you to go to nixle.com and sign up. These are, what it is, is these will actually send to your cell phone weather alerts or other alerts. So one of the things we'll be able to do going forward, we had some training on it yesterday, is that for example, if you had a boil order here in Streeter, we'll be able to send that out right away to your citizens and communicate to them. It's also a reverse 911 system. So if we had a real emergency where we needed to make sure everybody, we could actually call everybody's telephone. So we have that capability as well. Crime Stoppers, we're working at, we've taken the Streeter Crime Stoppers program over, and we're going to create something county-wide and Streeter-wide. So we're going to start taking tips shortly. We're working on getting that converted over as part of the Nixle program. Nixle also takes text tips. So you can text tips to us through Nixle. And that'd be, unknown. School camera initiative. So in the 911 center, we have all the school cameras in Livingston County and Streeter High School. So we can, if we had a, you know, get heaven forbid, if we had an active shooter, we have the ability to look inside the school and see what's going on. So every camera at Streeter High School is available to us. So we, you know, that's something that's just happened here in the last few months. So we've got that availability as well, and we've got protocols put in place that should there be something happen, you know, how would we handle that? I've got next-gen 911, and that's the big unknown. I know the city of Streeter never gets unfunded mandates from the state of Illinois, but that's our mandate that's coming down the road that we're staring at. Part of that's going to be text to 911, and there'll be a couple of other things. We've really, to be honest with you, we've really done a pretty good job of preparing and improving our infrastructure at Vermillion Valley. So we're hoping that this mandate is minimal to us, but at this point, we don't know. So we need to prepare for that. Just a few quick notes. We're a technology-driven entity, so technology changes constantly. So we're trying to stay on the edge of that and stay in the, part of the reason why we have the equipment, five-year equipment plan, is because we want to make sure we're rotating out the computers, servers, those types of things, so that we're not having to scramble around on the back end trying to replace that stuff when it goes down. We're going to retire our UHF radio system. For the city of Streeter, that doesn't mean a whole lot, but for Livingston County, it does. All of our fire departments, actually for South Streeter it does, because reading would be part of that. But they're currently on a UHF radio system, and we're going to retire that system and all be on one radio frequency, which is StarCom, which we went to a couple of years ago. We also are the host and oversee the Spelman system. We not only have the ability at our place, but all of the police departments are connected with Spelman, so they can actually see, they can share information and see each other's people. Our goal, quite frankly, is just to provide high-quality service. I think we're, I hope you feel like we're doing a good job of that. We're working really hard to do it. And if you have any questions, I'm going to have to take them at this time.
Randy, I have one question.
On this, sir.
On the Crime Stoppers, it's going to be Streeter and Livingston County.
Yes, sir.
We're going to call it Vermillion Valley.
We're going to call it Vermillion Valley Crime Stoppers.
And they're going to use the same number that was the old Streeter Crime Stoppers number.
Okay. But that would just be those portions of Streeter that's at the city levels, right? Not the outlying ones that would be in the South County?
I think, I think, Mayor, that, you know, we're going to have, anybody that would call in a tip, you know, if they lived outside, let's say, we would have no way of knowing where that tip came from. Obviously, we're looking for activity within your jurisdiction. So if it was activity that was not in your jurisdiction, we would pass that information along to the South County or whatever would need it.
Anybody else? What else? Do you have anything you want to add?
No, sir. I just, maybe just from my perspective as a police chief, we've been in part of the LiveCom, now VCOM, for a while with the Spelman system, and I hope Chief Bird would agree, and I think your police chief would agree, having a system that crosses jurisdictions has been a fantastic resource. I know personally that we've had crimes that we've been able to solve because we found, oh, this person was just had contact in Streeter and made contact with Streeter that before, when we had our own records management systems, was impossible to do. And so just the collaboration and the working together has just been fantastic for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to compliment Chief Wolfert, because he's been the chair of our organization, and we all felt as a board that we sort of been laboring in this new joint authority without really, without a lot of press and without a lot of feedback to the governing bodies that have made it possible. So, and one thing that I would say, that these mandates that Randy's talking about, while we're trying to position ourselves as best as possible to be ready for these mandates that are expected in 2020, 2020. 2020. My guess is that there's other 911 agencies that probably aren't as well-positioned, and there's likely to be additional discussion about consolidation. And so we're trying to position Vermillion Valley, so that we're in position to make it even more efficient and larger when that time comes. So I think our plan is to report back annually or every other year in light fashion.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next presentation, that must be at your door, sir.
So Dave Schaub, who has been, who has been the liaison between the city of Streeter and Waste Management Incorporated is here today. You've seen him before when we went through a contract renewal. And he asked to be on the agenda for a couple of reasons. The first is a presentation he wants to make that they're doing with Streeter Unlimited. Also, to talk more about this new program that's a part of Citizen Services at Your Door program. And maybe just briefly about a problem that we, that all of us are having in the United States in terms of trying to get rid of recycled changes in how we dispose of plastics. So with that, Dave, the floor is yours.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Dave Schaub. I'm the municipal marketing manager for Waste Management, and it's a pleasure to see you all again. I promise to be uncharacteristically brief. So I appreciate the opportunity. First thing I want to do is note that we were approached by Streeter Unlimited in our green grants area, that they asked if there's anything that we could do to help support the activities of Streeter Unlimited. And Giles here with us this evening, and I'm glad to say that we were able to grant, a grant of $500 to Streeter Unlimited. And there's no strings attached to this, or no particular governance to it other than we're more than happy to support it, and here we are. We look forward to continuing that relationship, and I had a great tour and enjoyed every bit of it. They do great work, and it's good work to do. So, thank you very much. You should see the checkbook I had to carry. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, everybody.
The At Your Door service, which we initiated with the May 1st contract, was new to this area and certainly new to the city and to our region. It is the ability for citizens to individually subscribe and schedule their own removal of hazardous wastes, of electronics, of used paint, things like that. It has, in the first five months of its existence, given a huge success. We're approaching the 10th-ton mark of how much of this hazardous waste of paint and electronics we've removed on an individual-at-your-door basis, and it's just spectacular. It's probably twice what we expected. But at the initial stages of any of these contracts, where it's a service that hasn't been offered and is offered, we get a flood of things that have been pent up. The customer comment cards that we get back from those, and those are all sent directly to the city, have a wealth of information, particularly how long you've been holding on to this stuff, waiting for someone to get rid of it. 15 to 20 years is the average right now. So we're getting some nicely aged hazardous waste. But it's been a tremendous success. It's been well utilized, and the comment cards are so good that they're embarrassing. So we look forward to that. And on a regular basis, I'll submit reports to the council on here's what we've done, here's what all the comment cards look like. And again, all the comment cards come to the city. I just have Patty send them to me. We reiterate those and put them in a form that we can catalyze and capture. So we appreciate it. A great success is available through the At Your Door website or through our 800 number for that, which is available through the city, through City Hall, and through the websites. And I encourage everybody to utilize it. When I've had opportunities to speak with the Rotary and others about how this is being utilized, people have said, well, I've used it two or three times already. That's what we want to hear. The average pickup weight, the average assembled load weight that we expect is something in the 40 to 42 pound range. In the third month, we averaged 112 pounds. So there's a pent-up demand, and we're meeting it, and I appreciate it. The last thing we have to do, that I have to bring to your attention, is recycling, and the state of recycling globally and how it affects Streeter. As you've seen on 60 Minutes and elsewhere, in 2017, the Chinese government told the World Trade Organization, by the way, we're not going to accept a whole bunch of items for recycling, including mixed paper and plastics. They were the home for more than 50% of what was collected at the curb in the United States. The sudden rush of that action caused the value of these things to plummet as we just didn't have anywhere to go to them. They have started to gradually take some back, although they might be known that by 2022, they're out of the business entirely. One thing that did stick is the new cleanliness level for the materials that we're sending to anyone that's involved with recycling. What we pick up at the curb is typically 20 to 25% contaminated. It has things that can't be recycled, it has trash, it has food contamination. 20 to 25%. The new standard for what we have to sell is 1/2 of 1%, which means it's almost impossible to maintain that level. You have to slow down the sorting lines, you have to add more people, so you have to drive up the cost of what's becoming increasingly expensive to deal with. Since we signed our contract on May 1st, the expense of processing one ton of recyclables here in Streeter has tripped. And it's just, we have no control over it. It's just, it is what it is. We're fighting through that. What it means is the letter that I've presented to council tonight is a request. It's more of an educational letter than this request, because it's only respectfully requested. But based on just that tripling of the cost of processing of what we're collecting just here in Streeter, we would have to ask the city for 44 cents a home a month in order to make up that differential. The reason we're bringing that to your attention and are bringing to all of our recycling cities' attention, we want to make sure that we're aware of it, all of us are aware of it together. And we want to make sure that as we go down the road of a fairly long contract, we want to keep bringing this to your attention because it would be good for us to mutually decide how we incrementally approach that and address that. The fear is that the end of the contract period, you're going to see such a huge increase in the charge for recycling that it might stop recycling, and that's what we desperately want to avoid. I'm not here in the role of Chicken Little saying that the sky is falling, and what are we going to do? It's just the new standard. And it's not just a change that we're used to in recycling, where we've seen fluctuations in the value of the commodities. This is a foundational change in how it's going to go from here forward, based primarily on the decline of this standard that we have to achieve. I want to bring that to your attention. If you'd like to have a discussion on that in the year of 2019, maybe in the first couple of quarters, we'd like to have just the chance of a working session to go about what this means, what we're looking forward to, and how we avoid sticker shock at the end of all of this. If we can find some cooperative way to address this as we go forward, we think that's the best way. And with that, I wanted, as we come to the end of another year, and how did that happen? On behalf of everyone with Waste Management, we appreciate the fact that we are your member of choice in these services. We deeply value the relationship we have with the city, and from all of us with Waste Management, best wishes for a Merry Christmas and a 2019 that straightens out a lot of these problems. And with that, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. That means that all I am is standing between you and your agenda, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave.
On the city agenda, item one.
Mayor, council, several of the items on the agenda tonight are things that we have to do at the end of the year, and this is one of them. The, we call it our budget reconciliation ordinance. This is an amendment to the 2018 budget. It is the only amendment that you process this year in 2018 of the budget. We save up amendments and put them all in one consolidated reconciliation ordinance rather than having little ones through the course of the year. So there's no net change to the budget at all. It's a zero net change, but there, but we, in some line items that were over and others that were under, and so we have adjusted them so that it comes out even. So it's recommended that be approved so we can close out the year. So the auditorium.
An entertaining motion to amend the annual budget for the city of Streeter for fiscal year 2018. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, call roll, please.
Edie?
Aye.
Rosak?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Landsford?
Aye.
So now that we've cleaned up the 2018 budget, we're ready to act on the 2019 fiscal year budget for the budget year beginning January 1. You conducted a couple of study sessions on it. You made some revisions to the staff's recommended budget. You conducted a hearing, all in accordance with the state law. And so it is now ready for final adoption. You all have your notebooks, and there haven't been any substantive changes since those, since the notebooks, so I didn't copy them. Again, you have the summary version that Wes produced for you for the public hearing. The budget is approximately, not exactly, but approximately $3 million less than the authorized fiscal year 2018 budget, and continues the financial policies, particularly with regard to your restricted reserve policies that you had in place now for several years. It's recommended that the budget be approved.
Thank you. An entertaining motion to approve a budget for the city of Streeter for the fiscal year 2019, January 1st, 2019 through December 31st, 2019. So, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, call roll, please.
Edie?
Aye.
Rosak?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Landsford?
Aye.
Item three. Item three is the annual tax levy ordinance, also something that you need to do in December so that it can be filed that timely for taxes, 2018 taxes payable in 2019. The summary of the tax levy is that now for the fifth year in a row, you are, you have elected as a matter of council policy to keep your levy as level as you possibly can, taking approximately $3.5 to $3.6 million in taxes. The EAVs have gone up and down since that time in both counties. But, and we've had a significant diversion of a portion of the levy that goes to the general fund that has had to be moved over to fire and police pension funds because of the increases in the actuarial requirements, something that is projected to continue. But through economies that you've taken in the budget, we've been able to keep the levy level. And in fact, the city of Streeter tax levy is really 20 separate levies that consolidate into one levy. And so with, some of them are capped by state law, some of them are not capped by state law, and they're allowed to be whatever the city has in its budget. And so it's a careful calculation of how to get to the council's directive, which is, you know, don't extract any more than last year, which is about $3.6 million. It won't end up being exactly that because of the variables that I mentioned. So, but I believe that this ordinance enacts what your policy was as you articulated during the budget session. So it's recommended that the tax levy be approved again.
An entertaining motion to approve the levy and assessment of taxes on real property for all purposes, for deferring expenses for all corporate purposes for the city of Streeter and for the fiscal year 2019 beginning January 1st, 2019 through December 31st, 2019. So, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussions? Clerk, call roll, please.
Edie?
Aye.
Rosak?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Landsford?
Aye.
Item four.
In the interest, Mayor, of moving quickly through these next five items, which are all the same, items four, five, six, seven, and eight are all ordinances which abate taxes on either general obligation bonds or alternative revenue general obligation bonds, for which you have identified when you passed these bond ordinances in years past, some as long ago as 2006. They're alternative revenue because although you have the authority to extend them onto your property tax levy, you have elected to use an alternative revenue source. In the case of the 2006 bonds, it was your other general revenues for those Parker improvements. In the case of the TIF bonds, it's TIF proceeds that go into the TIF accounts. In the case of the library refunding, it's the library's revenue and so forth. So what you are doing is saying, they're issued as GO bonds, and so they ordinarily go to the levy, and they do, unless you pass these ordinances which abate the taxes to the tax levy, and you have to do that each year on each of the bonds. So I'll shut up and let you just make. So I'll shut up and let you just make five different motions.
All right. I entertain a motion to approve the abating of the tax heretofore levy for the year 2018 to pay the principal and interest on $3,200,000 general obligation bonds, alternate revenue sources, Series 2015 of the City of Streeter City Hall renovations. Who moved? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, call roll, please.
Bedai?
Aye.
Rosak?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Mary Lansford?
Aye.
Item five, I entertain a motion to approve the abating of the tax heretofore levy for the year 2018 to pay the principal and interest on 2.34000 general obligation bonds, alternate revenue sources, Series 2016B of the City of Streeter, TIF North Point Plaza. So who moved? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, call roll, please.
Bedai?
Aye.
Rosak?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Mary Lansford?
Aye.
Item six, I entertain a motion to approve the abating of the tax heretofore levy for the year 2018 to pay the principal of an interest on $1,485,000 general obligation refunding bonds, alternate revenue sources, Series 2017A of the City of Streeter, 2006 park improvements.
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Clerk, call roll, please.
Bedai?
Aye.
Rosak?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Mary Lansford?
Aye.
Item seven, I entertain a motion to approve the abating of the tax heretofore levy for the year 2018 to pay the principal of an interest on $1,325,000 general obligation bonds, alternate revenue sources, Series 2017B of the City of Streeter, the projects. So moved? Is there a second? Any discussion? Clerk, call roll, please.
Bedai?
Aye.
Rosak?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Mary Lansford?
Aye.
Item eight, I entertain a motion to approve the abating of the tax heretofore levy for the year 2018 to pay the principal of an interest on $585,000 general obligation refunding bonds, alternate revenue sources, Series 2017C, the City of Streeter library expansion.
So moved.
Who moved? Is there a second? Any discussion? Clerk, call roll, please.
Bedai?
Aye.
Rosak?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Mary Lansford?
Aye.
Item nine.
Another year-end item, the law requires that you publish and distribute meetings scheduled for the year ahead. It doesn't mean you can't change these dates, you can, and we end up making a few changes, but this is what we project all of our meetings to be, not only for the City Council, but for all of the boards and commissions that you appoint, as well as designating our holidays. So Patty has prepared this, and so it's ready for your adoption by motion.
There is one thing.
Okay.
Library board, last night's meeting decided to meet at 4:30 on the 3rd Tuesday.
4:30 on the 3rd Tuesday.
Time has changed.
Okay.
From 6:00 to 4:30.
And that will apply to all meetings in 2019? So I recommend that the schedule be adopted with that amendment.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Clerk, call roll, please.
Bedai?
Aye.
Rosak?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Mary Lansford?
Aye.
Item ten?
Chief Bird. Mayor and Council, back in September, you approved the acceptance of a grant from Homeland Security for assistance to firefighters to help fund our Excellence in Resuscitation program that we're looking to do. So tonight, I'm asking you to go ahead and approve the purchases of the equipment that the grant is funding. We put it out in a bid process as required by Homeland Security and the city purchasing policy. However, we're asking not to go with a low bid on either item. The higher bid items that we're asking to get has technology that's going to help our Excellence in Resuscitation program, and that's what we're looking for. So studies continue to show that the best results from cardiac arrest is high-quality CPR. So the ZO monitor that we're asking you to purchase has real-time feedback in the monitor itself. So while you're doing compressions, there's an indicator that shows how hard to push them, to make sure you're pushing deep enough and that you're pushing fast enough. So you also have the visual indicator of that, and also it will tell you, push harder, push faster if needed. So it will talk to you as well. The other item that we're looking to purchase is called a mechanical CPR device. So we're asking to purchase this from Physio Control. It's called the Lucas device, and studies have also shown that responders get tired doing the CPR if they're doing it correctly, and even with rotating out, you still, the longer you go, the less effective your compressions are. So mechanical CPR devices take care of that problem by doing the compressions for you. Again, this is not the low bid item, we're asking for a little bit higher one. So studies have shown that the Lucas device has very good responses because of the suction cup device at the end of the piston. It'll actually, when it releases, it actually pulls the chest up, allowing blood to get into the heart to refill, so when it does compress again, it pushes throughout the body. So we're asking for you to approve the purchase of each of these items.
So Chief, even though you're not recommending the low bid, we're still below the authorization of the budget.
That's correct. So the grant was for $118,000, which included a 5% match by the city of about 6,000, sorry, 5,600, with the purchase of both those items at the cost of $92,000. We still have money left in the grant that we can go ahead and spend on items that fit the program as well. So $92,000 is well under the 118.
Thank you.
So Mayor, because we're not going with the low, apparently not going with the low responsible bid that the council hasn't acted yet, I would ask that the City Council make a finding and that it be reflected in the minutes of the meeting that the City Council has elected to select the products as suggested by the Fire Chief due to the superior technical performance of the two products and providing services to the citizens.
So that needs to be entered into the process of adoption?
Correct. Yes.
So you want to read the motion?
Well, the motion will be to adopt the resolution, but that the City Council finds that the products as recommended by the Fire Chief will slow down here to help off the City clerk.
All right. So I entertain a motion to authorize the purchase of emergency equipment...
With these findings?
With these findings presented by the Fire Chief.
Correct. That should be sufficient.
All right. Who moved? Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Clerk, call roll, please.
Bedai?
Aye.
Rosak?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Mary Lansford?
Aye.
Item eleven.
Mayor and Council, as you know and has been reported in the media, in November, arbitrator ruled against the city regarding its outstanding collective bargaining issues with the local chapter of Fraternal Order of Police. It's unfortunate for our budget, but it is what it is, that's the process in Illinois. So the union and the city agree on how the language of the, in concept, how the language of the collective bargaining agreement should be revised, but the actual wordsmithing of it is still in progress. And so what's in your packet is the current draft of that, we haven't put it to bed entirely. Even though we agree on what the arbitrator says and how it has to be incorporated, the actual wording is still getting worked out. So it is my humble request that you authorize the mayor and city manager to execute that agreement. Even though it's not letter-perfect today, the union, again, for year-end reasons and the startup in terms, is anxious to have all this taken care of by the end of the year. And I expect that we will have that wordsmithing done to the satisfaction of both parties by the end of December, but it is not done today.
So I entertain a motion to authorize the mayor and the city manager to execute a labor contract with the local council of Fraternal Order of Police.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Clerk, call roll, please.
Bedai?
Aye.
Rosak?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Mary Lansford?
Aye.
Item twelve.
Jeremy. Item twelve, this is the annual appropriation of MFT funds that are used by the Culver's Department to buy oil for the spray badge machine, aggregate for the spray badge machine as well as alleys, and then the subtle contract that we have with the state. So this is the annual requirement of IDOT to appropriate that money that was also included in the budget that was passed earlier.
I entertain a motion to authorize and approve the appropriating of 135,000 of MFT funds in connection with roadway maintenance projects for fiscal year 2019 for the maintenance of streets and highways under the provisions of the Illinois Highway Code. So who moved? Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Clerk, call roll, please.
Bedai?
Aye.
Rosak?
Aye.
Crouch?
Whoops.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Mary Lansford?
Aye.
Item thirteen.
Mayor and Council, this is a component of the downtown street scape project. There'll be two separate contracts, one to do all the street scape work and another to do the traffic signalization work at Vermillion and Bridge, Vermillion and Main, and Monroe and Main, and another to facilitate Vermillion and Monroe being returned to two-way traffic. Jeremy, why don't you explain why we had to separate them and the separate review process we had to go through and the recommendation that comes from that?
Thank you. Yeah, but basically, inside of our grant, we had, we allocated monies for a design contract to do the design for the traffic signals, to relocate or to redesign the traffic signals that Scott had mentioned. So we've gone through a quality-based selection. We accepted requests for qualifications from five firms, interviewed three of them, and now we have the recommendation tonight for Chamblin to do that design, and we're proceeding with them to do that design separately from trying to get the street scape components, the streetlights, the streetlights, not the traffic signals, the streetlights, the bumpouts, the concrete work, and the coal cart planters, and those street scape elements, redesign house by myself. And we want to proceed with that project as soon as IDOT gives us approval, so we can expedite that. And talking to Chamblin during the interview process, the lead time on just the order alone of the traffic signals themselves will push it further into the year if we can get the design approved by IDOT. So we're trying to get the street scape elements done as quickly as possible and then follow through with traffic signals.
The mayor and I participated in the interviews with the consultants along with Jeremy, and we are unanimous in our recommendation of Chamblin and the sources.
I entertain a motion to authorize the selection of an engineer to design traffic signal improvements in downtown Streeter with the approval of IDOT.
So moved.
Second. Any other discussion? Clerk, call roll.
Bedai?
Aye.
Rosak?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Mary Lansford?
Aye.
Item fourteen.
Thank you. This is, you've done several of these, but to issue a, for IDOT to issue a highway permit to a new curb cut along any of the state routes, they actually issued the permit to the city, basically to have the city inspect the work and make sure that it conforms to standards. So this is for the new strip mall in Wendy's that will be going at the northeast corner of Marilla Park and Route 23, Bloomington Street. So this will allow a curb cut onto 23 at the north edge of that, north end of that site on 23, as well as a entrance off of Marilla Park Road to necessitate the drive-through and extra access into the strip center. So if approved, we'll get this off IDOT, and then we can start making their curb cuts and keep going.
I entertain a motion to authorize an entrance from Illinois Route 23 to the Streeter Commons Development at 2410 and 2403 North Bloomington Street. So who moved? Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, call roll, please.
Bedai?
Aye.
Rosak?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Mary Lansford?
Aye.
Item fifteen.
I'm going to let the city attorney give you the background on this one.
Well, first of all, I'm not going anywhere. Don't be so relieved, Councilwoman Rosak. I'm very pleased that the local government firm, Klein, Thorp, and Jenkins, has asked me to join them as an on-equity partner in the firm. As the council knows, I've been a sole practitioner for about the past year and a half, and that's been a difficult road to hoe, and I'm glad to be able to associate myself with a very highly regarded local government law firm, and I'm very pleased that they want to plant their flag down the state in the City of Streeter. So I'm asking for council to consent to the transfer of all legal work from Myers Berry to the law firm of Klein, Thorp, and Jenkins effective January 1. We will not be changing our financial arrangement with the city, simply recognizing the change in that firm.
And I would entertain a motion to authorize transferring all agreements with the law firm of Myers Berry O'Connor and Churney to Klein, Thorp, and Jenkins.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Clerk, call roll, please.
Bedai?
Aye.
Rosak?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Mary Lansford?
Aye.
Item sixteen.
Item sixteen was taken off of your last agenda, and it's not ready for action, although the background material was, wasn't put into your mailboxes until Tuesday. So let me walk through this. PACE is an acronym that stands for Property-Assessed Clean Energy Program, meaning that in order to provide a new way of financing certain energy efficiencies like solar panels or energy-efficient windows and doors, or smart HVAC systems and other things that would save both energy and water, you're allowed to basically charge yourself by adding a surcharge on the property tax. It's not done involuntarily, it's done voluntarily. The property owner has to consent, the lender has to consent, so then the lender can extend additional credit and loans, which are then paid back from these surcharges on the property tax, which constitute a lien on the property to the fullest extent that property taxes also do. In order to implement this, you have to, you've already executed a resolution wanting to do it with Cheryl's assistance, so we've had to put together a little timeline for how we would go about this. The next step is to adopt an implementation plan, as well as determine which areas in the city are eligible for PACE. That's what's on the agenda tonight, and it's requested that you approve the plan and the designation of the areas in the city where PACE can be used. Following implementation of the plan, the next step would be to conduct a public hearing and to adopt an ordinance. And then the next step is that companies that would want to use it and can do so, which is going to require a little more administrative work by the city. The way the plan is put together is that we can choose to do the administration, or we can outsource it to a company that would handle, you know, collecting the fees and remitting them, making sure that everything is in compliance, which is something that I think, depending on the size of the project, we would want to outsource. But the plan also anticipates that we would charge fees for that to the beneficiaries so that it doesn't cost us any more net out to administer the program. If we adopt a PACE program, we'll be one of the first 10 cities, local governments, including counties, in the state of Illinois that have done this. We're kind of ahead of the curve in this. But we're doing it because we've had at least two, I think before the year's out, maybe a third, potential developer, one that's already known to you, which is the developer out of North Point, say that they would like to use this financing method in order to make the financing for their overall development projects possible. So that's why we're ahead of the curve here in Streeter. So if you have any questions about the implementation plan, I know it's kind of lengthy, it's about 12 pages long, but what it's really intended to do is to spell out all the things that[1761.36] that the developer has to do in order to have those surcharges placed on, placed on the property taxes to provide that additional finance. And one of the real advantages of it, I think, is that the advantage to these energy improvements doesn't just accrue to the owner, it accrues to the tenant as well. And in most, in a lot of these commercial deals, the tenant pays all their portion of taxes. So he's paying for improvements that he would, he or she would actually see in their own utility bills.
Thank you. And I entertain a motion approving a program plan for Streeter for a Streeter Property Assessed Clean Energy PACE program. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any other discussion?
The, I failed to mention that the area is designated, some communities will target a certain area of their jurisdiction. What we've done, and subject to your review and change if you like, is it can be used anywhere in the city for a commercial and industrial project, so long as that commercial industrial project is in a commercial industrial zone as designated by our zoning map inside the city limits of Streeter. So that's pretty broad. Some other states' PACE programs include residential programs, the Illinois program does not. So we're strictly just staying with commercial and industrial.
How many other tools? How many third-party administrators are out there? Are there people?
I don't know how many are out there. I don't think that there's, that they're all going to be beating down our doors, but I think that there's half a dozen or so that are capable of doing this kind of thing. It's not unlike serving as paying agent for bonds. It's sort of similar to that sort of function. So it's not like these people would only do this. It's allied to other sorts of financial services that municipalities and counties contract for, which is just that we haven't done it.
Any other comments or questions? Clerk, call or roll, please.
Beedie?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Marilyn Sprey?
Item seventeen.
So we now have a public safety training center out on the west end of 10th Street. And so I asked Chief Byrd to put together a city council policy for your consideration about how outside third parties would be able to use that facility and pay for it. So Chief?
Mayor and Council, what we're asking you to do is to approve the policy as it was written for in your packet. And really what we're looking to do is to adopt a fee schedule for any outside public safety entity to come and use the training facility, depending on what they want to do there. Also, we're looking at the approval for when we contract classes from training providers such as the University of Illinois or somebody else, that allows us to sell the extra seats to outside people to come in and train for the class.
Okay, thank you. So I entertain a motion to approve policy governing the use of the Public Safety Training Center. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
The waiver of liability isn't pretty much iron clad, I mean, being the...
We'll have a waiver of liability form that participants will be required to sign in order to participate. I hadn't finished writing that yet, but it'll be ready to go.
Well, I'm not sure that any waiver of liability is iron clad.
Yeah.
Being the rest, you know, in the hazard of the garbage, it would be something that would have to be.
The city manager makes an excellent point, nothing is iron clad.
Sure, and Chief, and Councilman, for when white burn training and those types of things that are going on that are very risky, there will be Streeter fire personnel that are watching over to make sure that all the FPA policies and everything are followed, and also protecting our equipment there at the facility.
Any other comments? I think we need to thank our two primary benefactors for this facility also. The Rose and the Harrison families. Entertaining, oh, okay, we'll call.
Beedie?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Marilyn?
Aye.
Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion?
The item that was added was item D. You already approved a similar ordinance that transfers property and in terms of the TIF land swap provisions to Metro Communications. This is the second one, sort of around the corner, because Mr. Huffines did all the work that he was required to do on the Monroe tap, both on the, with the mural that he put up, as well as the, on the part of his building pacing Monroe Street. So his part of the bargain has been met, and the last part of ours, besides participation in the SAG order, was to give him that strip of land that's on the north side of the fence. Sort of looks like it's his anyway, so.
Do we need, that is a separate motion or is that a consent?
Nope.
It's solid, any of the consent agenda, I just wanted to point it out.
Any other comments or questions? Clerk, call or roll, please.
Beedie?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Marilyn?
Call this council members.
Just want, I wish everybody a happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, whatever you celebrate, have a good one, and Happy New Year.
Yeah, a couple of things. I think obviously Streeter's had a good year in 2018. And I'd like to thank all the staff members who work very diligently every day to get this stuff done. It just doesn't happen, all these different programs to draw investors in the community takes a lot of work. Thank you all for doing this. One good, other thing that Streeter may do for, once again, is Pluto. The new Horizons spacecraft is on its way past Pluto. It's, I think, being almost 4 billion miles now. And to its next milestone is the spacecraft that's gone the furthest of any spacecraft that we've ever launched from the United States, or anywhere in the world, for that matter. And one of our fellow assistants is still on it, so he's seeing all the things that he discovered. And Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
To thank you everyone for coming, and Merry Christmas.
Just concur with what everybody else said, so have a nice holiday, and I entertain a motion for adjournment. So moved. Second.
Second.
Beedie?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Marilyn?
Aye.